We'll give her another minute and then we'll start. She could always. Jump in once she gets squared away.
The reason boot it off.
That's what the clouds for.
Yeah, yeah. I think I'm not peddling enough and creating enough electricity.
Sorry about that, everybody. I had a little technical difficulties. This is Jamie McKay, the owner, I guess, and applicant.
No worries. You're back. We can hear you.
I was just like, I can't, I can see you guys talking, but I didn't see what was going on. Yeah. Well, thanks for having us tonight. I don't know how you guys want to run this or start it all off, but uh.
Well, they haven't actually started yet, so.
One more person.
Okay, got it. Great.
You're good.
Who's Ponzi scheme?
Who's Ponzi scheme?
Somebody who's on. Name Ponzi scheme.
And that's Ja- that's Jamie's alias on his Zoom. It says, I think. It says Ponzi scheme.
It does. That's actually kind of funny. That's, that is a funny joke that my friend did. This is not funny anymore.
Somebody's channeling Bernie Madoff.
Right? What can I change that?
If you'd like, I can go ahead and change your name for this meeting.
That's weird. Yeah, I think my friend thought it was a really funny joke and I was like, huh?
Cause yeah, there you go. You changed it.
You're back.
You changed it for me?
You did or somebody else did?
Thanks. I don't know how that got on us. That's embarrassing.
Well, it's pretty interesting that you can just change people's names apparently too. Could make for interesting meetings in the future.
That's for sure.
You have to be nice to Alicia.
That's right. Otherwise you're in trouble.
That's right. No question.
How's the weather in Utah? I'm in Jackson right now, but we're getting pounded. We got like snow and sideways here. So that's a welcome for.
We're not yet getting it. We're supposed to tonight at about seven.
All right. Good stuff.
I think they said eight to 12. We'll see.
That's a lot. Ten to fifteen, just a little while. Yeah. They said twenty-three in Alta.
That's a lot. So do you guys follow that? There isn't there's like a website like called like Bowie Pop or something like that? There's some guy that follows them like. More in out by off Hawaii that tells you like seven days later, you're going to get a bunch of snow. You guys heard of that?
No.
Yeah, I'll try to track it down. My friend was telling me about it. This some, something about a buoy off Hawaii that when it hits a certain rise, a certain level. It'll tell you how many inches of snow are coming from that storm or how big the storm is going to be per the surge. And he said it's like. Like eighty-five to ninety percent accurate. It's pretty cool. So I don't look out. I'll look into it. Yeah, I don't know. I think it's called Bowie Pop or Bowie, something like that. So.
Impressive. I'll check that out.
Yeah.
Polly, we can start without the quorum because once Dana logs on, we'll have that. Is that, that's okay, right?
She's logging on right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you have to have the quorum to start the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Her computer's just going a little slow. Okay, it looks like Donna's here. Oh, there's Jonathan. I was like, where did Jonathan go? Yeah, it looks like Donna's here. So.
Okay, great.
I'm here.
So. This is, we'll call to order the December first planning commission meeting, which basically is a combination combining November twelfth. And December meeting. Um, first thing we'll do is do roll call. Glennis.
Here.
Ryan. Donna.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
And Tony is here. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the be, uh, copy of the October twentieth minutes that was sent out? And if so, does anybody have any comments in regard to them?
I, I just have a couple. Um, at, on, at number eight on page two. Um, it, it's, we moved to continue the item to the November seventeen meeting. And since it wasn't the seventeenth, is that a problem?
Um, the minutes should reflect what was discussed in the meeting. So um, that was accurate at that time. And then. Um, for purposes of these meetings, um, I can, you know, reflect the minutes from this meeting accordingly.
Okay, okay. I just one, I just wondered, um, I, and I found a missing word. I, I'm sorry to be so nitpicky, but.
That's okay. Um, just email it to me, Glennis, and I will get it incorporated in the final version.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
Are there any other comments in regard to the minutes, prior meetings minutes? Okay, then would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the October twentieth planning commission regular meeting and public.
Somebody like to second that?
I will.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Okay, so then we'll take a vote. Tony, yes. Glennis?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And Jonathan?
Yes.
And before we go any further, let me just, because I forgot to do that first, just reference the. Most anchor determination letter that's included in the packet. Um, as to why we will not have a physical location for this meeting. Okay, one other thing before we start the agenda items. Because we did not receive any materials for Deer Springs three, that's just going to be put all, that's going to be. Go from a date certain to a date uncertain. In the future, and once we get what we need, the date will be set and everybody will be notified. Okay, that being said, agenda items, number one, the presentation and discussion. Of an initial concept plan and potential annexation of the Benlock Ranch property. Thomas, would you mind giving us a quick overview of that before we have? Any kinds of discussion?
Sure, I'll key this up for you all and then I will turn it over to uh. Uh, Jamie and Patrick to give you a presentation. So. Um, the applicant has approached the town of Hideout regarding potential annexation with regard to the Benlock Ranch property, which is about twenty-three hundred acres, a significant site. This site is actually located outside of the town's annexation declaration area of boundary. So. This would require the town to actually amend, expand the ADA boundary as exists. If there was interest in this from both parties. And if that were the case, there would be. Action on the part of the town, planning commission and council to expand the ADA, the annexation declaration area. And then there would be a petition by the applicant for annexation. We thought it would be helpful before we went down that very um, technical road. To uh, have the applicant present to you conceptually what they're thinking about doing at Benlock Ranch. It also gives us an opportunity. To ensure transparency with our partners in Wasatch County and Hebrew City, who will probably have some interest in what is going on with regard to this application. So. Um, they thought um, they would present to you. I think they've got a few slides to present, to walk through the project, introduce themselves. Uh, to us, to you, and um. Uh, allow for question and answers. If you could real quickly, Alicia, are you controlling the slides? If you could scroll down to the, to my staff report and the, yeah, right there and go down to the map on the second page. I'll let them walk through the concept plan, the number of units, because they've got some really good slides that go into that in, in more detail. But here you can see the area in gray is uh, Benlock Ranch. Again, that, that. Purple boundary is our annexation declaration area. And of course, the area. Uh, in the hideout town boundary is kind of in that, you know, the orange area right there. Yep. So you can kind of see where things lie. Hebrew City boundary is down shaded in the uh, in the light red. And again, Benlock Ranch, the twenty-three hundred acres, that's approximately the area right there. There may have been a few parcels missed. That's kind of a general mapping area. But just to give you context, it's just south of, uh, on the south side of, uh, what is that State Road thirty-two on the south side of the Jordanale. So. Just by way of context, let you know where it is. Um. I've incorporated into the staff report for discussion later, just general plan concepts relative to what the general plan says about development, annexation, et cetera. We can walk through that again after the presentation, just some things to think about. And then we can get into Q and A and then recommendations and. Next step. So really, unless you have any questions of me, I think I would probably recommend we turn it over to Jamie and uh, Patrick for a presentation.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Thomas? There being none. Jamie and Patrick be my guests.
Great. Real quickly, Jamie, before you start off, Alicia, am I okay to share screen and I can pull the presentation up?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. And real quickly, Jason Bull, who's here on our team as well. Jason, do you want to walk through um? The slides for the, for the annexation boundary first, or do you want to come to that after we kind of have our walkthrough? Jason, you there? You're on mute. It's okay, we can come back to it. See here. Hey, Jamie, you want to go ahead and give a high level and we can come back to the, the items for.
Excuse me. So thank you guys for taking the time. Um, we appreciate that. Um, and so, yeah, we've been discussing and I seem to hide out for, I guess. Maybe a few years now. And then uh, now it's like, I guess this is the forefront. That's why we're talking to you tonight. Um. Yeah, but like, like Thomas said, Benlock Ranch is approximately twenty-three hundred acres, uh, two thousand forty-six ERUs, um. Uh, about seventeen hundred and ninety-one acre feet of water. And we have a, uh, pre-approved and developed uh, master planner. Or a development plan with Wasatch County currently. Um. We had a short chat with a few council members and maybe the mayor a few months ago, just. Just kind of a touch and go, just discussing the, the possibility of this. And then it um, it kind of led to where we're at today. We uh. We feel it is advantageous for, for the town of Hideout along with ourselves. To, I guess, create more of a diverse product type, uh, a more of affordable uh, housing type rather than all these. Three to five million dollar mansions you see, or whatever you want to call them throughout the valley. Um, and. Introduce kind of smart planning. Uh, we've kind of, we've mandated lots of solar on all of our homes. We've mandated, we haven't mandated. I guess the size of the homes, we're doing a lot of nodal development. So it's just not like wall to wall development. So it's not just. A sea of houses. Um, so you see like, you know. Call it two hundred acres that's developed. And then there's a nice little gap of. Four to six hundred yards. And there's another node and another node. So it's not all just. Uh, just kind of like gridlocked, like you see, like downtown Salt Lake or like many other developments we have. So. Um. And we just feel like it's a great fit. And just after talking with a few of the people along with the mayor. That our vision is in line with yours and like forward-thinking, smart development and, and not trying to do all these massive homes that are. You know, like I said, three to five million. So. I mean, that being said, we're just. Uh, open any questions you guys have of us and myself and um. And uh, that's about it for now, I guess. I'm, I'm open to any questions. Patrick, do you want to follow up with anything else?
Yeah, I just, if, if anybody, you know, if you guys want to hear more from us about, you know, specifics related to what's on the site, I mean, we're happy to. We can appreciate that it's everyone's Thursday night and, and probably don't have often. That long a meeting. So we can keep it as brief as you'd like and, or, and or answer as many questions as you'd like. But. You know, just from the slide you're seeing and we'll be happy to send uh, this presentation to Alicia to distribute to all of you folks. So you can review it. Um, after the meeting, but we've got, we've got several residential components that you can see from the plan or laid out. Like Jamie said, and kind of notably throughout the different parts of the sites, geography. Um, some of which would include, you know, single-family residential homes. Like Jamie said, not talking real. Large scale, you know, McMansions here. We're talking still in the twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred square foot range. Nothing, nothing that you're gonna. You know, see three stories from, from SR thirty-two or things like that. And then we've got. Kind of a, the, the smart forward-thinking planning concept that Jamie referenced with some of the. You'll see them called townhomes slash condos slash casitas. But. This idea that there's going to be, as you all know, for the area, there's a lot of folks that are going to be second and or third or tertiary homeowners. Um, in the valley as, as things continue to expand. And we want to accommodate that with. What we think is a more responsible product type to which it's got really nice usable outdoor space, but the indoor space isn't. cumbersome from a square footage perspective. Um, second to the residential, we've got a couple hospitality components that. Um, you know, we understand being on. This side of, of the hill from Park City, you know, there's a desire to be um, closer to fishing and outdoor activity that aren't necessarily ski resort related. Um, and so we've got the ability with the size of the site to do. Um, a fireside resort concept, which is something Jamie's um, been doing for a number of years. Uh, it's kind of a, a. Cabin concept. So you, you come and stay and you've got your own individual cabin for your family. It, it could have a loft unit. So it could accommodate six folks. Or call it two to four adults and some kiddos. But something that accommodates, you know, so if you, if you are a second homeowner and you've got that fifteen hundred square foot. Second home on the hill and you've got additional guests coming, they can stay at the resort located onsite. Um, and still you can accommodate those folks for a holiday or whatever the case may be. Um, and it's kind of a, a flexible, but really comfortable resort experience where you're lighting a fireplace that you're a campfire out in front of your cabin and things like that. Not. Not the traditional motel drive-up model at all. And then alternative to that, we've got a luxury hotel concept that we're considering. That'll be incorporated with a pre-high end golf course up on the hill. And the goal there being, you know, give people an opportunity to come someplace. Pretty much year round, not a whole shoulder season, but to enjoy, you know, a beautiful locale. Again, not needing to be at Deer Valley, not needing to be in Park City, kind of opening up this side. Cause. One of the things that really captivated us. Um, when the first, when we made the initial acquisition of the site years back. Was just the land, the views. Um, you know, it's, it's phenomenal up there and you get these vistas. And we wanted to be able to. Take advantage of that, not just from a building a home and selling it perspective, but also from a community perspective. With the idea that you're going to have. You know, folks visiting a, a resort or going up to a lodge for dinner. This is not by any stretch. This is not intended to be. Put a gate at the bottom and, and have you call in and see if you can get in for, for dinner, you know, because you know somebody. This is. This is the opposite of that where. Sure, it's not as if there's this massive entry and it's going to have all these lights and you're going to want to, you might even miss it. And that's kind of the goal is that it's, it's there, but it, it's something that looks like what's been there. It's not. We're not planting a bunch of new things. It's, it's a bunch of things that might look like they've already been there, but then all, all of a sudden you're seeing, oh, there's homes in there. And, and you can drive up and use some of the amenities. And, and so that's. That's what we've been geared towards. That's sort of some of which we inherited from previous plans for previous developments when we took down the site. And then. A lot of which came from negotiations with the county. And then to Jamie's point. As things moved along and progressed, we got to an interesting point where. Thinking outside the box vis a vis architecture at home size, things of that nature. It's not, it's not an easy conversation to, to discuss with old school folks. And that doesn't have anything to do with. Location, geography, or, or age for that matter, or demographic. It's just. When you use certain terms in a land development perspective like modular or like. You know, we don't have to develop all these things onsite. We can bring them in, in, you know, in pods and put them together. It's. This is very forward-thinking architecture and design, and it's beautiful when it's completed. It also means less work crews onsite and less construction traffic, but. Certain folks might not understand that concept. They might see, hear the word modular and think, oh, you're bringing in a double wide. And that's exactly what we're not doing. Um, and so that's. Part and parcel of why we've, we're talking to you folks. Um, is that. The mayor and, and, and folks surrounding, you know, the, the town of Hideout have talked about. With us entertained our ideas and said, you know, we like those concepts and we can understand. Why there's a synergy and, you know, where we, whereas with, with. The county, we've been working uphill a little bit more recently. With some of these concepts of, of, you know, different and, and smarter development, what we think is smarter and what we think is more. Um, you know, less traditional per se, just because it hasn't been done for a long period of time yet. But something that we think is certainly catching on. And then lastly, on the plan that you'll see, and again, there's a couple of slides that follow, but we can, we can drill down if anybody wants to talk specifics, but. There's a lot of thoughtful amenities, we think are thoughtful amenities that aren't just. It's not just a golf course community. It's not just a golf course community with a gate. It's intended to be. In some, to some degrees, a, a playground for whomever chooses to make it home in the sense of having trails, having. You know, a, a, a zip line or a tow rope for kids, summer, winter, or, you know, a par three golf course that. Allows for people to go learn to play golf, not necessarily having to go to this championship level golf course that hopefully will hold a tournament or two or. You know, kind of thoughtful in that way, commercial concept onsite. Um, again. This is sort of the plan that's. In place because we've been negotiating it for, for some time with the county. And if we're given the opportunity um, to pursue it further from an annexation conversation with you folks. The, there's certain things that might be up in the air and might need to be, you know. Refined further and we might need to reconsider some aspects, but. We really think that there's more of a synergy in the conversations that we've had thus far, hence are bringing it to your attention and hopefully continuing the discussion.
Patrick, I think, I, I think it would help if you, you guys had a, a few slides of some of the housing. I think it would probably help the commissioners if you would walk through some of those. Just to give them some precedent images with regard to residential, commercial, et cetera.
Great. Thanks, Thomas. Appreciate that. Yeah. So here's just a quick slide on the residential details. And again, we'll provide this for you, but maybe like Thomas said, it's just helpful to see. Um, some of the architecture and some of the concepts and, and how, you know, you're not looking at a. At a McMansion, pardon the term, you're not looking at stucco siding, you're looking at things that really blend it, we think really blend in with the surroundings. And it's. It's hard to conceptualize because when you start looking at lot counts and you think about two thousand plus homes, if that's the number. That's a lot of homes, but on twenty-five hundred acres. And if you do it right, and they blend in well, you can really make them kind of go away. And. You know, it's, it's kind of teetering on that fine edge of community, trying to provide that element of community and neighbors and neighborhoods. While also understanding the geography and trying to be. Really gentle as relates to that. Um. So here's some examples of, of that architecture. Jamie, do you want to talk about those at all?
I mean, yeah, I, I can touch on the architecture a little bit. And then, yeah, I mean, we're talking about stuff from. Even down to a thousand square feet, um, cabins and et cetera, things of that nature. Because there are a lot of people that want to visit Park City. We think that our buyer mix is about. Sixty, forty or seventy, thirty. Um. As in tourists that are going to be coming to town. And we're in the JBOZ overlay, which there's short-term rental capabilities. And so, yeah, we've designed cabins that are anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred to summer, summer thirty-five or four thousand with basements. Uh, the one thing we really did strive to do is keep the architecture forward-thinking. And we did a lot of like passive solar. And, and very thoughtful planning that way. And then along with kind of. Being on a, I guess somewhat rolling hillside and sometimes quite steep hillsides. A lot of these are kind of dug into the hills just so they're not so tall. I mean, there's a thirty-five foot height restriction in Wasatch County, which I don't think we. Ever are ever going to get close to that. We're really trying to minimize visual impacts and try to keep this. A little bit more subtle than most developments, I guess you see. So, um. That being said, uh, yeah, we're just excited about what we're doing. And we, it's been well received thus far. Uh, we've pretty much sold out of our first phase pretty quickly. We have a few, you know, lots remaining. Um, obviously the market's changed. But um, yeah, we, we're looking forward to continue to develop and the, I, it's, I just feel like. Moving forward with a, a municipality that has an open mind to, you know. Evolution and innovation and things that are forward-thinking for all of us, not just for the developer, but for the, for the, for the city and the communities, right? So it's, it's hopefully, hopefully we get someplace because I feel like we're. Um, sort of in the dark ages of Wasatch County. And then they're talking about log, log houses and then um. Stuff that was approved for log houses and like river rock. And we're going like, whoa. Let's do something unique and different than more glass and more of this and that. And uh, it just, you know. Sometimes it, it feels right to shift gears and move to something more forward-thinking. So. Yeah.
And then we've got some, a couple of things here. This is a good example of, of the fireside resort concept that I mentioned, which is kind of the small cabins. You could come and rent. Um, and, and right now this, this planning area is planned for being across the highway on the north side of the highway. Bordering the Jordanale. And Jamie, do you want to talk about fireside just briefly?
Yeah, exactly. So I have a fireside in Jackson. I have two in Jackson, actually. Um, and they're little cabin resorts. They're fantastic. It's like, um. All of our guests really love it. It's like Cowboys and Indians. His mom has decided she's inside the cabin. And she's got, you know, there's HVAC and she's excited. And then dad's outside playing Cowboys and Indians with like a, with a. Fire pit and making s'mores for the kids. So it's kind of this, it's pseudo glamping. Uh, but it's four seasons. So you can use it as a ski cabin or a fishing cabin. And then the beauty of having fireside. I guess onsite or close to site is that once again, we're not building all these gigantic homes to say, uh. A larger family is like, hey, my niece and nephew and, or my mom, dad, and whoever's coming to town, they can go rent a fireside cabin and they can expand the. Their footprint when they have people in town for, call it Thanksgiving or Christmas. And it's just, it's a unique way to. I guess, kind of help. Uh, I guess both things. It helps the commercial, it helps the commercial side of fireside resort. Uh, I guess both things, it helps the commercial, it helps the commercial side of fireside resort. By people at Benlock bringing guests in and vice versa, so, um, it's just a unique, um, component to. I guess anything this, this size, you're gonna want some hospitality and you're also gonna want onsite. So we have grocery stores, we're gonna have like a mountain bike shop, we're gonna have all sorts of things like that and some, you know, yoga studios, this, that and the other. So we're trying to keep and, and keep people onsite as much as possible and keep traffic obviously off SR thirty-two. So, I mean, there's multiple benefits, I mean, the more amenities you have. The more people will stay and play rather than drive off, so. But we are thirty minutes from Park City and ten minutes to Deer Valley or the new Mayflower. I mean, we're touching, um. Uh, Victory Ranch and so, I mean, we're kind of surrounded by like montages and we're trying to be like a Hampton Inn. So, we're just, we're just trying to bring something to the market that's different, new, fun and a little bit more affordable and diverse.
And here's one more slide with art, some examples of architecture. Um, and, and again, um, I think this is pretty, pretty inclusive of, of most of the conceptual level. Items that we're discussing, again, most of these things have been. Floated for years and, and approved or, or, you know. Some of the things like Jamie even mentioned are actually in process, you know, we've achieved some pretty darn good sales down at phase one. You know, we've already, even of the hundred and fifty-four phase one lots, we've got a mixture of a hundred and four single-family. Lots and then you've got fifty, you know, attached, attached unit lots, but they're kind of a. Jamie, you could describe the product further, but it's kind of an a- attached, detached hybrid product. Again, a, a really smaller lot concept, but it. Our goal with phase one was to sort of test the marketplace, see how this did and this has all been during COVID, right? I mean, we've been in a really. Odd, um, real estate sales environment for a couple of years. Both for, both for development and for sales, but we've gotten to, we've gotten to see some of the, the early. You know, real good velo- sales velocity that we are excited about and, you know, when you talk about a plan of this size. Obviously, everybody's looking at this going, man, this is, this is pretty big and it is, but it, it can be. Cre- turned into bite-sized pieces over time, you know, here we are selling out of phase one. We haven't yet, you know, we've got some master infrastructure still being worked through, but we actually don't have. Just yet another phase, we're now entering winter, so we kind of calm things down for the winter and in spring, we'll start on another phase and. Uniquely, again, we're gonna try another product type, which is, we've got a, a site with seventy cabin sites and they're gonna be that. What Jamie touched on, like a thousand fifteen hundred feet, call it the cabins at Benlock and they'll be. Still some of the same on, you know, online, the same architecture that we're looking at, that's a little bit more of that mountain modern is the term that everybody's using. Um, you know, forward-thinking kind of goes away when you look at it, but has that, you know, those, those glass. Big glass windows for those vistas and all that good stuff, but. Trying out another product type to see where that niches, because again, this, the valley, maybe it could absorb two thousand single-family sites that are all an acre. It might take a really darn long time. We'd rather look at it consciously and go, hey, what is this, what does the valley need, what, what? How do we want to grow the valley and who's gonna come in and want what? And we're finding out already that there's enough people that want different things that it supports kind of that growth model where. This community can be one that serves, like Jamie pointed out, stay and, you know, come to play, but stay. Come use the retail, it's all, you know, the, the idea being maybe there's a boutique grocer, maybe there's a workout studio, maybe there's a conference center. At Benlock Ranch that, you know, in this case, for this conversation, that members of Hi- Town of Hideout can easily come in. And say, hey, great, you know, this feels like home, I don't want to drive. To Kimball Junction, I want to drive over here now, granted, obviously, we're not gonna have big box anything. It's not that size and that's not, that's not the feeling we're going for, but. To get your, to get your essentials or to have, you know. Santas, you know, take the grandkids to see Santa at the retail, you know, the little, the little outdoor mall. I mean, it could be as simple as something like that or on the kids ranch or whatever it may be, but. You know, amenities like that, programs like that, but again. The types of products that we're working through in the initial phases, we're still. We're not walking in here saying, we know exactly what's gonna sell and sell out fast and, and we're just gonna build it and they will come, this is sort of a. Hey, how does this work? Oh, this product has worked well too, let's, okay, now we should put more of those up here. Because this is how it went and this is what we think the, you know, the economics are for having more of that and. And again, I think part of our conversations that we're really looking forward to with the town of Hideout are. What's important to hide out? You know, because right now we've been dealing with, with Wausatch County for five years. You know, Jamie took down the site in twenty eighteen and we've been working diligently for. For four plus years, trying to get the approvals in place, trying to get the concepts understood. And amenable to the parties that be and those who, who kind of make the rules, but. Again, I think having that responsible conversation with the right partners in terms of the municipality. And in this case, hideout. Wh- what, what helps hideout more, is it more retail, is it more commercial revenue or is it more hospitality revenue and again? Maybe it's even including in HOA restrictions, like. No, these can't be primary homes, because we don't want them impacting schools and we don't want them. You know, full-time or the tax revenue is better on it, all those things are up for discussion because. You know, we can appreciate, we've been doing it one direction, but if we tack a little bit here and have a new partner. There's still opportunity with a ton of the project remaining. To still make some of those tweaks and make them responsibly so that, so that the municipality. Who, who includes it, in this case, it could be hideout, if it's included in the town of Hideout, then the ti- town of Hideout can say, we're proud of. Benlock Ranch being part of, uh, you know, the town, so.
Hey, uh, re- real fast, we're going on and on, uh, thanks Patrick, so. Also, I want everyone to re- remember that we're not asking for an upzone, it's exactly the same amount of ERUs and housing development units. That would take place whether we're in Hideout or we're in Wausatch County. Um, so I just want you guys to know that while we're talking about discussion, we're not just coming over with this piece of farmland saying, hey, we want this upzone, we want to be part of Hideout, we want to do this, this, this. We, uh, I mean, we get to exist and survive and do whatever we're doing and, and Wausatch, we just think that it's. Thus far, are a better fit, so I just wanted you to know that this is not an upzone or any like zoning change whatsoever. We're just looking to move to a more adaptable and, and hopefully nimble, uh, municipality, so thank you very much and, um. I'm sure you guys have some questions now.
Jamie, one question I have is, do you have water rights for the whole project already?
Yeah, we have one thousand seven hundred ninety-one acre feet.
Then, one other question, um. And the development, um, summary. Shot there, you have a parcel that's. A part of Benlock Ranch to be developed by other parties. Is there anything? In the works in that regard to that piece of property or is that just for down the road in future?
I mean, that's, that's been bought by another group and they are currently working through their. Zoning and their stuff, they're so deep within Wausatch right now. That I don't know that they, I mean, we want to include them in the boundary, I think they'll come with us later, but right now, I think they've got their hands full with where they're at.
Oh, okay. And one other thing, the golf course, is that gonna be public or private?
That is a great question, the golf course is still, uh, hypothetical, we do need a certain amount of open space. And so, we thought, like, I mean, golf is on the rise, you know, it seems like everyone's been golfing a lot lately. Other than me, I mean, I, I think I played golf maybe twice last year and, um. Well, me playing twice is like playing four times, so I. Shoot like a one-twenty, okay, so, uh, but yeah, so the golf course is, is hypothetical, I mean. We do, we had a definitely, we had like a par three concept and some kind of fun stuff like that for families and things of that nature, so. There definitely will be, uh, some public golf benefit on the property. Um, some may end up being private if it's. This big golf course, we're talking about this really cool par three, uh. Then the gentleman actually designed this course called like the Bad Little Mine and, and, and. Scottsdale and apparently it's been wildly successful, so there will be a, a public component. We've also talked about a cool chairlift, it'll go up and down, then people can mountain bike and that'll be open to the public, um. Like, once again, we're not, we're not trying to shut the gates, so yeah.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Um, I can't see, um, these light gray areas, I think it says SFR. And then I can't see what it says underneath there, because it's not big enough on my little laptop here. Can you disc- what these little areas are?
I mean, I'm, I'm, because my, I, my iPad failed on me on the audio, but I can see it, I mean, I know what they are, I mean. Some says golf casinos and then single-family large, single-family medium. SFR large and then some estate lots, large lots. Medium, large, small, uh, they're all just, just a variety of different, um. I mean, lot sizes, you know?
Yeah, so all of those areas that are in the kind of bubbles are the residential components and then the description below them. I'm sorry, you guys can't see them, but the description below them kind of describes what intention, what our intention is for what kind of lot size or lot range would go in that. Kind of in that node.
Where would the boutique grocery store be?
Down.
The commercial.
So phase one, there you go, whoever's doing that, right, at the base of phase one, kind of the entrance of Benlock, so. I mean, my background is in landscaping, I, I started with a landscape company, so I, we have a. Three or four large ponds, let's call them two or three acre ponds where it'll be fantastic fun, ice skating and also fi- fishing in the summer. And down there by the ponds, there's some creeks and such. And we did kind of a European courtyard where you'll park at the end, it'll be kind of a pedestrian walk. And there'll be like mountain bike shops and, you know, coffee shop and. Uh, you know, grocery, this, that and the other, because you do need some ancillary items onsite, otherwise you're, once again. To get a gallon of milk or some cheese or anything like that, you're gonna drive down the highway, so like, we can capture those people there. Without dumping them off, off the highway, so it's right there at the base. Towards the entrance down there, um, where that one is where, where whoever's.
I can draw, let me see if I can draw it, yeah. Right there.
Yeah, okay. And the water, uh, looks like you have, uh, some ponds or lakes. Uh, lower left where it says golf course over there, and there's another one by the number seven. Are, are, is that water already there? Are those existing ponds?
Yeah, the, 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 the lower stuff on the bottom left is, there's some like spring-fed ponds back there that are fantastic and, um. It's a big wildlife sanctuary, there's all sorts of elk and deer and they all come down there to drink, especially this time of year when it's, you know, getting later and the water's. Disappearing everywhere else, so that, those are existing, uh, water features, yes, but the, the one up by seven would be. A conceptual man-made pond that, the way we've been looking at the engineering, would they would actually end up being like. A fire suppression pond also, so it acts as two, you get the benefit of a, of a. Nice-looking pond and also you have a fire hydrant, dry hydrant that a fire truck can hook up to and. Pull as much water off that as they needed for. Any fi- of any future fire, so.
Cause it looks pretty big, uh, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how big that is.
Yeah, that is pretty big, I mean, that's definitely, let's say, like one, two, that's probably four acres or five acres.
Okay, okay.
Can you give us, um, some information about your background, about like other projects that you've done?
Yeah, happy to, so I've done a, a few fireside resorts here in Jackson, I, uh, working on one in Whitefish, Montana. Another cabin resort there and then also one up by, uh, Glacier also and then. I've done another project here in Jackson, it was about. Seven hundred acres that I bought from the Mead family, that, um, was a, is old-time rancher family that we developed into. Larger estate lots and that was quite successful, we did the same thing, we kind of. Prepackaged and really did fantastic land planning, I think, uh, and we sold all those home sites with. Kind of an architectural design home per, per site. And so that was pretty successful, I've done, my, I guess, probably. Seven to ten, I guess, different spec homes throughout my life. And then, um, a couple other transactions, actually here in Jackson, one was like a cash creek, it was about ninety acres. That we worked on, did some, some stuff and then sold that, so yeah, I've, I've been in the development world for, for, I guess, twenty years now, I guess.
Jamie, do you want to describe Wheelhouse just a tiny bit too?
Yeah, I mean, Wheelhouse is just a, uh. Is a modular company that I've created and it creates, we just build. Basically, Wheelhouse builds things that are quite small, from like four hundred square feet up to call it a thousand. Um, it's based in Salt Lake City, uh, you guys are happy to swing by anytime, it's at three two five five west, five hundred south. Uh, we build really high-end modular and, uh, we pride ourselves on, um. Innovative, fun architecture and it's been a successful business for the last ten years.
I have a question, you know, given the proximity of, of the project Heber. Um, and, and could you maybe talk a little bit more about the issues? For why you're coming to hideout versus Heber versus staying in the county? And I, I'm not looking for negativity, I'm just trying to understand, what are the issues that bring you to the town? You know, what is it you're looking for, what is it you need? Um, I want to get a feel for that, um, without getting into personalities or anything like that, I just want to understand the issues.
Yeah, that, that, that's a great question, thank you, um, so. Yeah, the issues are, um. We don't have any, any bone to pick or anything with Wausatch County, we just feel like it's kind of glacial over there. Um, and we, we, I don't know, I act fast and move fast and think fast, uh. And I feel like I'm just, I feel like we're kind of just spent a little bit slower over there, so we're just looking for a more dynamic partner. Um. And Heber to our south, uh, they've had a lot on their plate. With other annexations coming in. As in Sorenson and, uh, all the others that are coming, it's their, their plate is full, um, and it just didn't seem like the right fit for us at this moment. To go that direction because of, uh. So I guess, politics, I guess, and I think the outcry of the people would be a little bit. Upset, even though, once again, a lot of these other people annexing or wanting up zones and more density, where we're just sticking with our same exact. Unit count, same amount of year used, we have our water, we're not asking for anything different, whether we're. In a blue jersey or red jersey, it doesn't really matter, but we're, we're hoping that, um. Yeah, working with Hideout would be more beneficial and streamlined with our permitting process. With our plating and all that kind of stuff, I just, I feel like Wausatch County may be a tad bit overwhelmed and once again, I'm not speaking badly of them, I'm just. I'm just talking in general terms.
Yeah, I just want to understand, you know, what the issues are, because, you know, at first glance, and I've only had this for about thirty-two hours. Um, at first glance, it's a very interesting project. And, but then I always have to ask, okay, what's, you know, what's going on, what are the issues, you know, what, what do you seek from the town other than? You know, what I gather is some, to move, uh, a little faster, um, than that kind of thing, are there specific things you? You seek from Hideout or you think that Hideout has that, that fit you better?
I mean, um. Yeah, I mean, like I said, like my first conversation. You know, online with the mayor and everything, we were just talking about more affordable product and every single time I bring up, uh, smaller cabins or smaller homes or. Whatever it is, Wausatch County has this like knee-jerk reaction and says, he's gonna put a bunch of crazy modular homes on the mountain or shipping containers, I've heard, and I'm like. That's not the case, I've, I've, I've honestly signed three affidavits and said I'm not intending to put shipping containers on the mountain. And so, you know, the rumor mill is what it is, uh. Yeah, we just want to be with a more dynamic, uh, municipality and, and I honestly mean that and. And there's some benefit also, we've discussed, um. Some public infrastructure district stuff, so we can build and finance quite a bit of. Public benefit and, and that's one of the things that I, I know that, um, has happened in Hideout and, uh, I know that Wausatch County has a. Um, is adverse to that and so I think that's one of the benefits that would, would help us.
Well, can you expand on that, what, what do you exactly do you mean by that?
Well, it's like, uh, I'm. It's basically a public infrastructure bond where we can finance, I guess. Call it county roads and, uh, parks and, and things.
Any amenities, yeah.
Any.
Parks.
For the public and then for the, for the benefit of the public and also for the benefit of, of, of. Or further in the, uh, the development, so. It just, it's a better way to, I guess, move through financing and move through, uh, development with, um. Just more agile.
Sure, do you, do you have a feel for just how big you think you might need for that?
I don't, but I mean, because the one thing is, I mean, we have our main artery road all, all the way cut to the top. Uh, we have a big water tank onsite already, we have all of our connections there, I mean, we're. I, I don't know what that number will be, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be anything that's gonna blow anyone's hair out. Blow anyone's hair out, off, but I, it's going to be, I think we talked about like a five mil levy that would go on, on the, on the taxes and it would be paid off over time. And, um, it would just be a, it's, it's going to benefit the community in so many different ways because. Uh, public roads and, and like I said, parks and things that everyone can use.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one other question. Are you open to affordable or worker housing, that kind of thing? That's a, that's a hot topic at the moment.
Oh yeah, no, I know very, very much so. And we are, we, we've discussed affordable housing, uh, we've done some fee and lose stuff. But I think that what you're going to see coming through us is a lot of de facto affordable housing. I think wherein people will feel like, wow, this is affordable enough that I can actually get this and I don't have to say I'm buying an affordable house, but also, um. You know, we've talked about some types of apartment concepts too. I think, I think affordable rentals are very important because like where I live in Jackson Hole. Part times, I live there part time also. Uh, they sold all the affordable houses and now the, the people that live in them are, you know. Well off or whatever's going on. And then everyone that needs to be working in the county and the community. They don't have a place to live, so they're going over the past to Victor. So I think affordable rentals is something we're very open to because I think there's always going to be. People bumping chairs or people working at restaurants or whatever, and they're there for a couple of seasons and then they're out. So I don't think that everyone needs to own an affordable house. I think affordable rental. Is a very wise way to look at it, but we're not, we're not adverse to rental or, or some affordable housing component, that's for sure. But we really look forward to affordable rentals and other, uh, rental type product.
Okay, thank you.
And, and to dovetail that real quickly, that was a component that we floated. A couple of years back, um, there's some, there's some elements on the geography that Jamie thought lent itself to. Some really camouflaged, but. Elements that you could, you could put in buildings that would function as apartments.
Where would that go on your map?
There, Jamie, do you recall? I, I want to say we had. And this was a time, this was ways.
We're talking, we're talking about the, um.
When you wanted to do some apartment type style, was it?
It was kind of over there by phase three. So, I mean, and, and there's multiple areas we could put this. So yeah, that area exactly. So that area is, was kind of a, we were seeing some kind of terrorist with, with the. The topography there is fantastic. It's, it's kind of a beautiful valley and it shoots out. And, um, we thought, we, we were thinking we could do some kind of cool like terrorist kind of units that we really kind of. Kind of, I don't know, I, I guess we need to pull up the architecture and share it with you next time, but. It was a, a good land plan idea that kind of like, you know, didn't really, we kind of ran into a brick wall with that one. Um, but we wanted, we do want affordable components. We want firefighters, teachers and people like that to live here. We want them to be. Part of the community. Otherwise it's all for naught. I mean, what are we all doing then, right? So we're, we're very in tune to what the market needs and we feel like. Isolating ourselves out there on the hill, call it. Would be, um, I think kind of idiotic. So we're well, we're very open to affordable housing and affordable rentals. And, um, we'd love to talk about it more because I, I mean, I've tried to do affordable housing in Jackson and I've just got. So I got shut down on that one. I was probably twenty five years old. I said, I want to do fifty seven affordable houses on an old RV park. Which ended up turning into fireside because I put on the, uh, wheelhouse cabins and. I mean, that was a blessing in disguise, but I was rooting and did try to steward and push forward fifty seven affordable homes in Jackson back. I mean, fifteen years ago. So I'm, I'm, I'm well aware of what's happening and what's needed and, and. If we don't have it, we're all going to be left alone by ourselves.
I keep thinking about, um, community amenities like fire stations and police stations and all that stuff. Are you ne- now planning to access Heber for all that or are you planning to build anything?
Well, Patrick is going to deputize Patrick and then I, I was thinking about getting a, getting a, maybe running for sheriff. Um, no, we, we talked about an onsite fire station. We have another piece of land across the highway there. Um, and maybe expanding. Hideout's situation. Who, who's the, um, who takes care of hideout currently?
We have county fire and EMS.
Okay.
It's on the other side near, um, Mayflower.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, I know right where it's at. That's where Ernie, well, Ernie Gauzy just retired though, but I know this, I know the building, um. Yeah, like.
Far from where you guys are though.
What's that again?
I said, it's pretty far from, from where you. This is where it came in.
Yeah, that's for sure. And I mean, the same thing is even farther for, um. Victory Ranch. So I mean, we've proposed to the county also, we've burrowed into, you know, donating some land for that. For, and also, you know, maybe even that's part of this. Like I was talking, the, the Pid financing where we can actually build. And help the community on this side of the mountain because I mean, there's something that bad happens over here. It's a little ways out. So. I mean, especially fire. I mean, put it this way, I mean, I bought three fire trucks. From the military just for wildland fires. I'm like, I just, if this place lit up, you'd be out there running around and waiting for the fire. So we had our own fire trucks on the ridge. Whenever there's a lightning storm, but they go up there and with their. Uh, binoculars and glassy place. And I mean, thankfully we had a nice wet summer, um, hopefully have a big winter. But, uh, we're, we're open to funding and or, um, building. Some infrastructure that would help our police station. Sheriff's Department and Fire.
Um, I don't have a question at the moment, but I, um, just wanted to let you know that we visited. The fireside, um, community in, um, in Jackson. And my husband has a fascination with. Small homes and, um, I'm sure he's been on your website before. Um, so. You know, I, I, I think, I think they're wonderful myself. Um, so just wanted to. Put that plug in.
Well, that was an easy one. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yeah.
If I understand you correctly, you kind of envisioned all these facilities being available to the public, I assume for some reasonable fee. Is my understanding pretty, pretty on, on point?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, I guess that before, there's, there's probably going to be a component, maybe if we do this, um. This massive championship course or I shouldn't say massive, this championship golf course, that may have a private component to it. But we are definitely going to be offering different amenities, i.e. like this chairlift for mountain biking and there's mountain biking trails. You know, we're going to have a parking area for the public to pull in and, and park and they go mountain biking area. And these trails connect all the way to. To Sorenson and all the way back. So there's going to be plenty of public, um, access, um. And also, I mean, who's going to guard that, right? I mean, people are, they'll pull in and, and do it with, with they may, so there's going to be a.
Are, are you open to, to an idea of maybe a, a public multi-use kind of facility there? Um, is that something that might be potentially doable? You know, like a combination, maybe the summertime concert, wintertime. You know, meeting, uh, some facility of that nature. Is that something that, that might be doable?
Yeah, I mean, that, you're, you're striking on something I really like. So I've been kind of like, I've been doodling as I do and I like to draw and sketch and stuff. So I, we've been kind of designing this kind of amphitheater thing where there could be like summertime. Maybe the symphony comes out of rivers, but kind of dug into the hill with like the natural topography, but enhancing it more. Like, we're not going to call it Red Rocks, right? I mean, Red Rocks is fantastic, but something really cool like that where you can have some music and some stuff. And have some events and, um, and yeah, maybe there is a component to that, um. With our, uh, our fireside resort and our conference center that people could use for that. But I mean, there's lots of fun things like that that we're throwing around. Um, and we really want it to be. A fun, vibrant community. And so that is, yeah, that, but that, that doesn't include locking people out. So we want people in.
Uh, I would like to make a suggestion, uh, to you according about the golf course. Personally speaking, uh, I'm a pretty avid golfer and there are a lot of private courses around here. I really feel, you know, you have Tuhei right up the street, you have Victory Ranch, you have Promontory. I know we can, we can drive a half an hour to Soldier Hollow. Um, and over to Wasatch, but you know, I, I would really love to see at least. If this golf course needed to be private or semi-private, it was open to hideout residents. Um, at a discount or something to that effect. I don't, you know, I don't know if to work something out, but I mean, I would, I, you know, just. Having a private just for this community. Doesn't do much for me.
Right, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. That's where I play is Soldier Hollow whenever I get to the, the, I played, um. And, uh, once again, fantastic architecture there with their lot. I love that kind of weird angled look. Um, yeah, I mean, there is a, there, like I said before, we're talking about this like par three that would be open. I mean, obviously. People who buy in here will be able to use the golf, obviously, um. I mean, there's all sorts of ways you can look at that and there could be certain. Player days or whatever, however you want to call it, that says, okay, it's open to the public. On Tuesdays from this to this or whatever, um. Part of the driving force behind the golf course is, is gonna, it's connected to. Lot sales and making this community work. So you can have. You can't have a successful community without a golf course. I'm still not totally sold on the golf course. It's in our onset plan now because we. Have been approached by multiple people that are like, we would love to partner and build this golf course with you and make it fantastic and da, 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 da. But where the rubber meets the road is they're, they're looking at dollars and cents of building that. And so I would have to go back and discuss some ideas with them. So I, I'll leave that door open, but there will be lots of other amenities. And like I said, that par three and the mountain biking and the chairlift would be. Open to hideout residents, yes.
Um, I don't really see any, um, much, uh, unless I'm not really noticing. Open space and I don't, like, I, I don't understand where these mountain bike trails or trails are.
Yeah, that's hard to see too. There's a little zigzaggy. I don't even know if we have most of the trails on here. And then once again, this is like a, our general pod, like first glance, uh, coming to talk to you guys plan. I mean, it's a massive piece of property. Uh, off to the right, you can see where they've developed and kind of done off all their lots, et cetera, et cetera. So, but there will be plenty of open space, um. We thought that we would come over and we would meet. What does hideout require? Thirty percent? So that neighborhood.
We, we have, we have a formula, but it hovers around, ends up being around twenty five to thirty percent. Yeah, it's a formula, yeah.
Yeah, so we wouldn't meet or exceed that easily at least, but let's just. If, if your open space requirement is thirty percent, we'd be thirty five easily. So I mean, and, or maybe more. I mean, but so my point is this is a very rough draft or not, it's not a rough draft. It's a rough nodal plan that you're looking at. So. We could, you know, once we get farther down the road, if, if we think this is a great fit or it's just going to work, we'd be, we could drill down and get to those numbers. And say, hey, we're thirty seven point eight percent open space or whatever that is. So, but I, I assure you, there's lots of open space currently in our plan.
Uh, but you're already sold out of phase one, so that's pretty much granted right there.
Yep, but the open space for phase one is off to the left and there's some space off to the right. I mean, all the way to the left, keep going, like all the way to the border there. And so, and then also, I mean, golf is considered open space. Cause it's. It's open space. It's grass and, and it would be, once again, it's going to be like a link style course. It's not going to gobble up a bunch of water. We're trying to keep it more native and natural. There's a lot of really cool big boulders kind of sticking out of the ground back there. And we've got to make it this kind of Scottish feel of, uh. A link style course that it wouldn't just suck water down.
And what is the square, uh, to the left of? Phase one there, there's a gray square.
Yeah, that's Bob and Nancy's. No, I'm, I'm actually just kidding. I, that's another, that's an in holding that someone owns.
It's a what?
It's an in holding. Someone, someone else owns it, um.
Oh.
And, uh, yeah, we've reached out to him many times via letter and we haven't received anything back. We don't know where they're. Where they're at, but yeah.
So that's just a piece of, piece of open land that somebody else owns and wants to hold on to.
Yeah, it's, it's on like thirty percent slopes, on a pretty aggressive, it's on pretty aggressive terrain. Um, and once again, like I said, we've written them multiple letters and haven't received anything back. It's a ten acre square. So. Yeah.
Okay.
And there's no, no building on it, I take it?
No, there's not, no.
So I was trying to look, where is, according to this, but where is Victory Ranch according to this map? I was just trying to figure where exactly this piece of property.
So I don't know who's controlling the screen. So if you move. To the shaded area, no, victory rent, nope, that's not, well, that is part of it.
It's part of it and over here.
Where?
That's victory there, all the way around the horn, yep.
Wait a minute, hold on a second. I didn't see, I have, oh, on that side, okay.
Yeah, it's behind, sorry, it's behind your windows probably if Zoom has them there.
So you're, so this property, uh, because right now I have my maps up on my phone. And so this property is closer to Heber. On that side of Victory Ranch? Or is it closer to Francis?
It'd be closer to Heber.
Yes, it, we're, we're like, yeah, we're close to Heber.
Here, let's give you a better slide for this. This is a lot better. So here's victory.
Wait a minute, show me, okay.
And here's where we've been discussing.
Okay, and then River Road where it meets forty.
You're going to have to zoom out again.
Uh, I can't go any further.
So there it is. Yeah, you can zoom it out and it's down there. I can't do it because I'm on my.
It's a static slide. I can't, I'm not on.
You're right there though, Patrick, wherever you're, you're moving.
Down here.
No, it's, it's further up, 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 up. Action kind of there.
Oh, you're talking about where forty is.
Where forty meets, uh, River Road or thirty two, you know.
Isn't it here?
Take your cursor up, up, up the road, keep going up. There it is, right that intersection right there, bam.
That's thirty two right there, yeah.
Oh, right, right, yep. Thinking we were.
Isn't that the dam? Isn't that the dam?
Yeah, that's what I thought. I think we're down here. Yeah, this is coming around.
Okay, my bad. I'm, once again, I'm looking at my iPhone squinting, wondering where I, why I don't have readers.
Not here, not here, down here, yep. So then you wind around.
Wind around, you are right, yep.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And there's a bit of development here that Sorenson's.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm. So, so are, are, aren't those homes, um, smaller, a little bit smaller?
There's, I think they're anywhere from like three thousand to forty five hundred square feet attached product.
And they're attached, yeah.
I mean, which is, it's fine. It's, it's a, it's, it is, it's a, it's a product type that's serving a purpose. It's not. A blight by any means, fine. But, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's fine.
Can you tell us who services this area for water and sewer? Is that JSST or is that some other system?
No, you're correct.
JSST.
Do they have a capacity, um, for something, um, of this magnitude?
Yes, we, we've already have pre-approved and prepaid impact fees for all of our water and sewer. We have all the water and sewer, all, all the way up onsite. The water tanks named Lady Monument and we're planning to connect to that in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. So yeah, that we're already, all that has been flushed out and it's part of our existing. Development plan and existing entitlements that we have that we would just basically be saying, scratch out Wasatch, add in hideout.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just, uh, real quick, I was a little confused by that. So it's Wasatch County, but you're right now, your municipality is Heber.
No, 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 but it's Wasatch County we're in right now.
Oh, so it's just Wasatch County. Okay.
Correct, yes.
Are we going to have a conflict with them?
I, that, that's for, uh, someone else that gets paid more than me. Um. I, I don't, uh, I don't know if the county has a say in it, but, um. That's for somebody else to, to opine on.
Yet legally you can overlap in the annexation declaration areas, which is what would be the case here. And then you can annex, you know. Legally, you can do that.
Is this something that we need to? I'm sorry, is this, um, something that we need to have as a? Um, I know it's only a concept plan review right now, but is it something that? Um, what am I trying to say? That the entire hideout community would want to weigh in, um, as in a, um. What am I trying to say? What are those called again?
Are you talking about a sketch plan?
No, I know, but, uh, a public hearing.
This, yeah, just, yeah, just for clarification, tonight is a concept plan just to. Introduce this project to see, to gauge a level of interest with the planning commission. You know, we certainly have some. Would have some work to do with regard to setting this up for a potential annexation if that were the desire. We would have to. Expand our annexation expansion area over down south into this area and then. Uh, the Benlock team would submit an application, a petition for annexation. So there's a couple of steps. So there would be a number of public hearings. We would want for that to be the case, to be transparent, um, coordinate with our regional partners, coordinate with the residents. So it would be, um, a series of public hearings, actually.
So I have a question. So tonight we're just talking, discussing. If you guys feel like we should be in your annexation boundary, correct? And it's kind of giving you like, hey, this is who we are and what we're doing and this is what we're planning to do, being very transparent and. Just an open table discussion. And so, yeah, we're, we're just looking. For feedback and questions, which have all been very helpful.
I think if you could drill down on just how big, uh, you know, public infrastructure bond, you think you're going to need, get a better handle on that, that's. That's going to be a big issue, I think. Um, and so it'd be helpful to understand just how big are we talking about here?
Right, right. We, we could, we could work that out and figure out what we're planning to do. Like I said, we're not, I don't think we're going to swing for the fences and I mean, obviously. Just the bond and the bond market is actually absolutely dead right now for this type of stuff, but, um. Obviously it'll live back up. So we're happy to be transparent and discuss what our, our thoughts are there. And I guess we could come up with a, an amount or whatever. But I, I mean, obviously you can't put so much debt on something that it doesn't work because no one's going to buy it because they're going to look at it and go, that doesn't make any sense because my taxes are so high that. So we're not going to shoot ourselves in the foot and we don't want to overburden any taxpayers with too much debt. So. It's a very fair question and we, we can definitely come up with that number. We haven't thought that through yet, but we, we can come to the table and, and, and provide that to you.
Okay.
And to be clear, the mill levy would obviously only be on future homes that would be sold as part of the development. It wouldn't impact existing residents. The type of, the type of bond transaction that we're talking about. However, the, the positive for the, for the town or the municipality is that. And this is one of the hurdles when dealing with the Wasatch County who wasn't interested in discussing it further was. But there could be elements of public infrastructure that are truly public in the sense of. Oh, you want a fire station way over there? Well, let's use some of the proceeds to buy that land and improve a fire station way over there. It doesn't even have to be on site. It doesn't have to benefit the developer, but. Because we have the future residential units that will, that will be encumbered by that mill levy increase. We can raise the capital to do those things and that becomes, you know, kind of a, a joint venture, if you will, between the municipality and the developer.
What else would you be seeking from the town? Anything, anything above that or beyond that? You know, we talked about cooperation and, and, and that kind of thing. Is there anything special other than the bond that, that you think you're going to be needing?
I think, um. I don't think anything outlandish. We just wanted, uh. Just to have a, a, an understanding of like forward thinking architecture and a diverse product type. That's, and that's what. You mentioned, I think yourself was some affordable housing and sportable rentals and components like that. That we seem to be at an impasse with, with others. So I think that it's just more of a diverse product type and forward thinking development is what we're after. And a little bit more expedited approvals because I feel like, you know, there's, but there's been a lot happening. Obviously, as you guys all know, you live and, and work there and that's your home. Um, it's been overwhelming for a lot of people. And I get it. I mean, Wasatch County has been overrun by building permits and, um. I can't say it's been easy on them, but, but we're looking for a more streamlined approach so long that we're fair with you and open and. And we give you the tools that you need to approve stuff. We're looking for kind of an expeditious. Uh. Working environment that is beneficial for you and us. So we don't just go back and forth and back and forth. So. And a more transparent. Um, I guess line by line, like it's like when we go file for a building permit or we do something, you know, it just, there's no. You need this, 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 and this, and then you get your permit. It's, we do this, this, and then all of a sudden they want that and this and that. So we. We just like a more clear understanding of permitting and plating and, and, and a. And a way forward that is transparent for all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Um, remind me of a couple of things, um. And, and Thomas, you may need to help. What, what is the current acreage of hideout? Compared with the proposed annexation? Because just kind of looking at it, it looks like it's going to double. Hideout size and it's also going to double the, um. The number of houses, houses, number of doors. Is that an accurate conclusion?
So in terms of the proposed annexation area here, you're right. That, that area in yellow probably, that's a roughly about a doubling of the size of the geography. Keep in mind, our annexation area is actually, um, significantly larger than the community. It's about. Three and a half times the size of the community. So, uh, this would just add to that. So it would not be a doubling of the annexation expansion area, but if you look at the town proper. Yeah, it, it's about double. I don't know our exact acreage or this acreage, but I can certainly pull that together. Um, in terms of, uh, units, yeah, you would be. Our total build out right now is probably near twenty. Right now about twenty-six hundred units. We're certainly not that far in, um, but we have that approximately that capacity, give or take. And this would add twenty-three hundred units. So, yeah, not quite doubling what is currently, um, entitled or potentially entitled.
It, it looks like you pick up part of Jordan L reservoir, which is probably pretty handy.
Yeah, we've got a lot of that in the, uh, the existing annexation expansion area.
Oh, it looks like you're grabbing the rest. Or maybe, I hope.
Yep, we'd be coming down to the south side. Yeah.
Would that give us any other land that's not? Um. Part of their development? Because I'm looking at the blue area. Is that all, is that all land that they own?
Uh, there's a lot, some of that's federal land that would just come with the annexation as far as I know. Um. And there are a few other, um. There are a few other parties that are coming with us. So.
Well, you have the, the state park at the end there.
Correct.
That, that and that federal lands, right? Kind of there around the, if you can kind of see the, the actual Jordan L, the lake, some of the area around that would then come in with.
Yeah, some of those guys. There you go.
Yes, so we're, we're bringing a state park with us also.
But thi- this is, this is Jason Bull, um, and we, I helped work on, on the maps. And I think it's important to understand that there's really two steps. This blue area is just showing the annex, uh, the annexation plan boundary and how that's expanding. And Patrick, if you can go to the, the next slide. Um, and what we're talking about and actually being annexed is, is slightly different. Um, this is what, what we've talked about is, is a potential annexation petition. And so even though we're expanding the boundary, we wouldn't necessarily be annexing all of that, that property in the expanded boundary.
Okay.
So to Jason's point, the importance being here's the existing. And what needs to happen is the, if, if we were to continue the discussion, the, the boundary needs to change to this. And then by doing so, you could then annex. The property by way of this, this, this annexation.
These parcels, that's right.
Right.
Where's Tuhei on that map?
Right above the area in yellow. Yeah.
Right here. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
And the area to the furthest east that is currently being developed by. Another party, that area is not being proposed for annexation, not shown here, not being proposed. Is that right?
Not yet. That's correct.
Hmm.
And that, and their, their units are in excess of the twenty-three hundred that you guys are proposing. They're not inclusive. You're not.
They are actually included in that number.
They are. Okay.
Yeah. So the twenty-three hundred is kind of the community total, we would say. And we're responsible for about seventeen hundred of those. The expectation, given the maps that we created with Jason, the expectation being that there's a, there's a nexus that would make sense if they were part of hideout as well. But as to Jamie's earlier point, given their. Their kind of how far along they are in the process with Wasatch County, with what they're trying to develop right now. That's why they're not part of this call, but we would expect, that's kind of why we included it in the boundary is because we would fully expect that they would want to be part of. Part of the discussion in the future potentially. But if they're not ready to do so, it's not necessary. If, if the boundary were amended to include them, it wouldn't be necessary to have them necessarily be part of the proposed annexation.
And you said, uh, it was either Patrick or Jamie, uh, that there is already a main road in place, correct?
Sure, yes.
And.
Yeah, we have Benlock Ranch Road is already cut all the way up to the top. Um. And we have our SR thirty-two road cuts for both of our entrances, our U dot, A cell, D cell lanes. Uh, the developments, I mean, it's already opened up and going. So, um. And that main road is, is a fairly, very substantial chunk of work.
I was going to say what the, was curious what the width of it is.
Uh. It's whatever it is, the county spec, I think it's thirty feet or something like that. It was like a couple of shoulders that are fairly large.
Right. So Thomas, you think it would be, be up to our code, right?
Yeah, we have a minimum requirement of twenty-six, so that would meet it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it feels like, um, I eighty, but. I mean, it's, it's just a bit wide. And I mean, I think once it's landscaped and cleaned up and done, then I think it'll be better, but something I, I call it I eighty because I think it's kind of funny, but. Uh, it seems quite wide, but I think the width is inclusive of like, uh. Bike trail on the side and, you know. Drainage swells, et cetera. So I think once it's all done, it'll. It'll be easier on my eyes. I don't know, it bugs me a little bit, but yeah.
Well, I would think you would need a wider road. If it's a main road, you have twenty, you know, you have, you know. Units going in there. Um, I would rather see a little wider road personally. Uh. For that reason, but also, you know, so you would be, uh. Be with our, or I'm sorry, I'm very tired today. Um, just got out of work, but you would have to, um. Uh, go with our code. There's a word I can't even think of. We're dark skies compliant, you know, you would be that. We're, we're a dark, dark sky community. So you would have to be, uh.
By it with the, our code. That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. We, we already have dark sky compliant, uh, street lights. We, we, we would do whether you guys want it or not. Just get a smart plan in and for thinking. So yeah, we're, we're, we're.
Okay.
We're, of course, we would adopt your code when we moved over. Um, and then also, I mean, I don't want to leave, I don't want to leave the door open or shut, but I mean, obviously this has a lot of units and we have. Had conversations with Utah Open Lands and we've talked about conservation easements, et cetera, but we can't obviously. Putting that in writing or discuss it much further than that, but, uh, knowing that in the future. Most likely I doubt you'll see this many units, but, uh, you never know.
What was that again? Most likely you would.
I said, most, like, most likely you may not see this many units.
Okay.
But, but I can't guarantee that. I mean, my point is, um. Like I, I guess that we've been talking with Utah Open Lands about conservation easements and. I mean, things of that nature may transpire or may not. Um, we would just want, um, the county to. Okay, that if we ever did want to do a conservationism or sorry, the city. Up hideout.
And across from phase one there, um, across the street from the number one. There's a, it looks like a little, yeah, right in there. What kind of development is that or area?
So that was like what we touched on earlier. That's going to be, we're, we think right now we're going to be calling that like the cabins of Benlock or. Those are going to be like thousand, fifteen hundred square feet or fifteen, anywhere from thousand to two thousand square foot cabins.
All right. Those are the, uh, okay, I see here. Three hundred and fifty of a thousand and five hundred and fifty of a fifteen hundred square foot.
I don't know.
It'll just be a small, it'll just be a small segment of those. That's, that's the product type. Some of those will be there. That actually, that area has.
Part of that. That would be a part of those smaller.
Correct. Yep. That'll, that, that one area will have about seventy of them.
Okay.
In that range. Yep.
Okay. Well, I think I, I'm, I think I've exhausted my questions.
As you guys, as you guys think about it, is, is, is this something you would like for us to continue moving forward with? Uh, discussions with, with the applicants? As I said, this is kind of a first step. It's kind of an introductory step. Um, is it something you generally would, would give a head nod to? Let's look at it. Let's begin some of our collaborative work. Let's start to, um. Think about what next steps might be. Is, is that generally where you are or?
Thomas, this is Tony. Um, I'd like to see this go forward to see what, I'm curious as to what our next steps would be. But I think the plan is, it's got some validity to it and I'd like to see us move forward, uh, a little bit further with this.
I think we could see a win-win situation here. I mean, it's already been zoned. It's already, you know, it looks. Like they've really made headway here. They sold, uh, phase one. I like the fact of the, the golf course, although I would like it to be open to hideout residents. Um. And, um, and I like the affordability. Of it. And it's, they've already, they've already started. You know, it's. And I think the town and, and then we would receive the revenue.
I'd really like to. I'd really like to see uh, uh, get a better feel for the timing of, you know, of each phase. And each each development. Um, and I think that would be something that would be really important to me, but I I I also agree. I I see a lot of potential merit here. Bear in mind, we've only had this for thirty-two hours in one discussion, but I I think it it merits looking into.
I'd like to actually see the property.
I would like, that's the next thing I was gonna say. Could arrange the. Take a tour.
We'd love to tour. It's it's open now. You can go out there anytime you want. Um. Take a look at my lakes. I'm so proud of her my ponds. But yeah, I'd happy to meet everyone onsite and give you guys a tour and um, and and zip you around. And uh, anytime, it's always open. The gates are open.
We've driven by it before, but we didn't, um, my husband and I didn't drive in. We. I guess weren't sure of where to drive in, but um, I like the, I like the smaller um. Uh, product. I like that a lot because it leaves more open space.
I appreciate that. I don't I don't know. I think we got cut off when you guys were talking about whether you liked it or not. I apologize for interrupting.
No, I think if if maybe that is something we could do, maybe as one of the next steps is maybe try to set up a site visit. I mean, certainly. As Jamie noted, certainly you're free to go out there and drive it, but if you wanted a site visit, maybe Jamie, is that something we could coordinate with you and or Patrick or Jason or?
Yes.
Okay.
And anytime, yeah, we could figure something out that works for everyone. And if it has to be, you know, handful one time, I'm we're happy to tour. One or two or three or all of you once. I know everyone's busy and we all have jobs, so. And uh, I'm there quite a bit, so I'm happy to take you around one-on-one or all of you at once or whatever works.
Okay, if we do it as a group, we'll have to certainly uh, notice that as a as a if we have more than a forum, but we'll 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 coordinate that with you all.
Yeah, whatever works for you guys is we're we're open.
Jamie, Patrick, Jason, anything you needed from us? Anything more? Again, this was introductory, so planning commissioners, anybody, anything?
No, I I think it was great. Uh, we appreciate your time and um. I know that you guys are busy and it's now, what time is it now? Seven thirty, we have more, maybe a few more other agenda items and. We do appreciate you guys taking the time to review this and then hopefully the uh, we can move towards better. And um, just a better relationship and I'm moving forward with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Tony, do you need some kind of motion?
No.
On this one, you don't, you don't need a motion as a concept plan. I think you guys are generally giving a head nod. Uh, we can't give an approval for a concept plan just because it's not in your jurisdiction. So this was again, just a methodology to. Open it up, maintain transparency and introduce it. So I think your indications of let's consider next steps are where we will move forward with. At this point. Yeah, thank you for that.
Item two on the agenda, presentation and discussion of an in- of an initial concept plan. And potential annexation of parcel Creek, the Creekside property.
Alicia, do you, are you able to share the staff report?
Yeah, sorry, just one sec.
So this is a project that has some history to it. It started quite some time ago. Uh, it was, it's a seven point five acre site, and I'll show you the map and kind of give you. Site context when Alicia pulls it up, but it had been considered for um, or did there had been a petition for annexation back in twenty twenty. And at that time, I think the order of events, if I have it correct, was that it was brought to the um. Because it was already in the ADA, the expansion declaration area, it was a petition to the town council. It was presented to the town council in May of twenty twenty, and at that time, um, there were some. Questions, some concerns, and um, the applicant at that time uh, decided to uh, withdraw the application. But continue working with the uh, with the town and Chris Ensign is here, so he'll jump in and correct me if I get this history wrong as we were discussing this earlier. Um, so it was withdrawn from the council, but the council did suggest, you know, as you. If you consider reapplying, if you consider bringing it back, a site visit would be important to us. The council did conduct a site visit. A few of the council folks made it out there, and then there was a uh, request. From the applicant to bring it back and maybe start with the planning commission because. There were some concerns about what how how much density, how many lots, what size, that kind of thing. But before it went to the planning commission, there was a request for a site visit from the planning commissioner. So I didn't include that in my staff report, but. If Chris and I are correct, the planning commissioners, some of them back in must have been. Fall of twenty twenty, they did a site visit as well on that property. And so some council folks and some planning commissioners back at that time have visited this property. When um, some of the the input um, at that time was, there was a, there was some concern about. The the quality of the wetlands down there and identifying those at the time, that was not noted on the concept plan, the subdivision plan that was submitted, so. Chris took the time, had it surveyed, and um, the exhibit in the package that was sent to you does include. Um, the area of wetlands that would be protected. There is a duck, there's a pretty significant duck population down there. It's a, it's a pretty beautiful piece of property. And so the proposal is to again, kind of get a head nod, yes, a head nod, no. With regard to um, a concept plan. Again, it's not currently in your jurisdiction, it's outside. Um, so we can't do a formal vote, but kind of get a head nod to give Chris direction. So again, seven point five acres. The proposal is to subdivide it into ten lots, each at about maybe three quarter, three quarters of an acre or so. Again, you can see that on the exhibit and maybe I we don't have to go there yet. We'll go there at the end, Alicia. Um, but um. The proposal would be to bring it in as somewhat of a medium density because mountain residential density requires. A um, a one acre minimum, so this would have to come in as proposed as a uh, as a residential three. You might go to, could you go to the the map just on the next page, just so we give context before I go to right up there's. So again, um, you can see. Uh, Alicia, I don't know if I have opportunity, an opportunity to annotate if I, if you can give it to me, that'd be great, but. You could see certainly in the uh, in the circle area, this is that little notched out area. That's the seven and a half acres that is being requested for annexation. What you see right above that is Deer Springs. That's the Deer Springs development, so to give you context. The um, concerns at the time are noted in the staff report. If you go down a little bit. Further and then we'll circle back. Go down a little further, you can see there, well, actually stay there because that, one of the concerns at the time, the council heard it. Is you can see that this would be that dark area or that dark line. It would be the road that comes off Bellevue that goes into Deer Springs. This would come off of that. There's a curb cut there, so a road could go into this area. It's a pretty steep slope. There is a um, there is a, there is a bike path that goes perpendicular to that. Proposed dark road that I've got outlined there. There were some concerns from the council and the planning commissioners at their site visit that. This does interrupt that that new bike path. You go down a little further, Alicia. You'll get to. You'll get to the recommendation, yeah. So uh, so again, there were some concerns with the access road, the slope um, of the site. There are some significant slopes in the area and the uh, the density at the time. So this is really, again, to reintroduce this project, some of you may have been here then, some of you weren't, but it's really to reintroduce it to you. Uh, Chris can certainly walk through his um, concept design, but. I've outlined some recommendations here that were a combination of what we heard from the council. Uh, back in twenty twenty and some of the planning commission members as well. They were concerned about, again, steep slopes, wanted a steep slope analysis. A slope analysis. We have the contours, so doing a slope analysis would be pretty simple in this one. Um, looking at maybe a reduced density. Uh, and um, looking at um. Is there a different access to this particular piece of property? At one point, we were looking at an access to the property off Bellevue that was almost a bit more east-west, if you will, to avoid in. Impacting the bike path. So looking at that and looking at maybe um. Significantly reduced disturbance areas. The uh, council, when they were on their site visit, were concerned about. Grubbing and grading in this area to a great extent. Again, the wetlands are certainly a protective resource. We would protect those, but even some of the areas around it. Um, there were some concerns with this development, with this density. So that's really where we are. Um, Chris certainly jump in, correct me if I've missed anything or misstated anything. It's hard to remember exactly what.
And Thomas, can you just? Can you clarify too, from the what was proposed a few years ago? Has there been any changes to the proposal?
So there hasn't been any changes, but the um, but Chris and his team did identify the wetlands. That was, that was a significant. Uh, request at the uh, at the last um, hearing. But the concept has remained the same.
I can provide a little context to that. There have been some updates, but maybe I'll just start at the beginning, try and include some of those. The wetland certainly guided some of that. It it, would that be all right if I kind of just covered a little?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
There any, okay. Well, uh, good to be back with all you guys again tonight. Thank you. Um, yeah, the the high level, I guess the concept is is uh, we are hoping to become part of the neighborhood up there. We're surrounded. By uh, hideout on all three sides and uh, want to connect in. Uh, there's a, there's a road planned at the top that's been. Directed in between two lots, so there's a nice wide road uh, for us to connect on to. We have been out there a couple of times, you know, it's just kind of been a little bit of a process understanding. Uh, as mentioned, the 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 wetland study was a part of it. I could share a screen if that's all right. Is is that acceptable? I can kind of show a little bit of that.
Yeah.
Let me do that. So if I. You guys see that? Okay. So um. So as our good friend Nate Brockman developed uh, Deer Deer Springs, uh, one of the deers, I think it's Deer Springs, is that correct? Deer Springs around us. Uh, that changed the nature a little bit for my partner Bart Warner, who is on tonight, who's on this land for twenty-some years. Uh, down there, it was always hopeful to build his cabin down there and kind of have a quiet spot. Uh, they were never able to come to a. A a plan with the neighbors on how to how to get a road all the way down through there. Uh, they didn't, the neighbors decided not to build, so they were. Wanting to be careful about where a road went. So in the end, uh, they the Austin sold the property and uh, and he got some new neighbors over there, so. At this point, I don't think the plan is anymore to 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 build that home, but to uh, to to annex in and and become part of the community up there. Uh, as mentioned, there was a, and I, it's been a while. Some of you. Was was anyone there for the planning commission when we walked the site kind of on the upper rim? Okay. Okay, two. All right, well, and so we we kind of could see where where we didn't walk down in there. We did with uh, city council when we did some time ago, but. Uh, town council, but we kind of walked down there and and it is a really charming slice. It's kind of the heart of the watermelon. Right down there where we'd like to bring with us when we join the community is that great amenity is that is that little area, because the ducks. And the wildlife that walks through there is spectacular and and so that's certainly a part of where this is heading. So as you can see here. Uh, the the concept is similar. There's not a lot you can do. Certainly, this access point over here is impossible. This 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 drop is significant. It would go right through the wetlands. Uh, it just really wasn't uh, even feasible. Generally, at this point, this is the only planned available access. Uh, to get down in here. So this, you can see topography lines. I'm gonna zoom in on it on another one here moment. We can take a little bit of a look, but I do want to point out this. So we conducted a study. To understand these. So there's wetlands and water's edge, so two two uh, wet items. Uh, the 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 wetlands is designated with this line here. And if you're down there, you can see the the um, the landscaping, the the. The what am I, the growth changes. You can tell where the wetlands are. Uh, now the wetland setback is not, is not a very big setback, but the wet uh, water's edge is a hundred foot. So if we, if you can kind of see this, this is water's edge, and they go through there and they kind of define that just truly by water. And then we've, we've got a hu- this is a hundred foot and I can zoom in on another one. This is a screenshot here, but this is a hundred foot setback, so you kind of can see. So from water's edge, we've moved all the buildable pads beyond the hundred foot mark. So that we're we're outside of, and then and I think that's a, Thomas, do you recall, was that a, that was a state kind of code? That was a, or was that?
It's a state and a local code, one hundred setback from water's edge, yeah.
Okay, so we believe that this is end up twisting the road just a little bit, but generally remain the same. Um, our thoughts on this, oh, well, there's a little better picture. You can see our hundred foot and the setback. The 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 real sweet spot is right down through here, and and that's where we're hoping to create an amenity here, so. Let me start by saying, generally, we don't need all that seven acres. Um, we'd like to propose dedicating two-thirds of it to open space one, so you can protect uh. The sides here, so you don't get random sheds or something. I don't, I don't know what you'd put up there, but generally protect hillside views. And then also to protect and provide an amenity for this uh, this wetlands area that. All the new two hundred and twenty neighbors sitting ups up uphill from him can can hopefully have direct access. So I'll I'll show you that here in a moment. So here's our thought is we could provide. And they, when I talked to the gentleman that did our study, he said there is kind of protocol on this, so. I don't know exactly how that is, but generally you can provide an elevated uh, pathway that we could link into. I've got one more slide on this, so. An elevated pathway that we could link into the existing bike walking trail. Tie it right in, and that can continue as it as it already does. I can't see it on the map, but I kind of think it just kind of winds through here, and I'm not sure where it goes yet. If we ever end up getting connection into the lake trails or not. But this was generally a rough idea of what we'd propose is kind of bringing it right along in some of the wetlands, but then also just kind of water's edge where you could kind of see. This duck population and kind of have this nice path to walk through. So hopefully, this would create a. A beautiful experience for for not only these residents in Creekside, but also everyone up top. Deer Springs to be able to have a a better path down to the lake and and enjoy some nature along the way there. So anyway, great area, and that's where we would hope to. Provide this walkable and bikeable path in this dedicated open space. So conceptually, what's changed? We don't, we don't want to keep these size of lots for each home site here. Uh, we'd want to just carve them off in an acceptable point, uh, provide building pads in a in a small backyard. And commit the rest of it to open space. So conceptually, yes, it looks similarly, but. The use open space private would change significantly. We brought up that it's a ten ten lot. Uh, this comes out to be a one point three uh, units per acre. Um, very sensible approach. I think you mentioned a zoning of a a medium. Our neighbors, I I believe, sit at around two point two units per acre, uh, so we'd be nearly half what our neighbors are uphill. Let's see, I mean. Oh, the road, that was, that was another big item as well. There would be a road regardless, so bisecting the trail is inevitable in one way or the other. Uh, certainly Bart would have access to put in his road. To 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 a home, so but the there are options or possibilities. Uh, I'm gonna go back up just a little bit. Again, I I don't, I think it's kind of right through here somewhere.
That's about right. Yeah.
Yeah, some kind of right through here. There there's probably two things that we could do, uh, or three. There's probably, there's numbers. One, Nate Brockbank. Talked to me about, hey, we can loop it this way, bring it around through here. There's options to bring this path. Right along like this and bring it down around this. through here. There's options to bring this path right along like this and bring it down around this as well. Uh, if we are going to stay up in this area, I think just designation, keeping, this isn't going to be a very busy road at all. And, and at worst case, or some other option, we could tunnel. So I, I just think that if, 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 if that's the, the element, I think there's options that we can come up with on how to get a walkable path through there. But again, we're talking ten, ten residences, not the two hundred and twenty up top that are going to be driving through here or anything. So this is not going to be a very busy road at all. I think there'd be options available to us to, to keep that a safe passage with the road coming regardless. Um, yeah, that's kind of high level. What, what questions could I, could we cover? Uh, happy to meet out there again to see, oh, there is one more. Let me, let me swap out of here real quick. I wanted to show topographies come up a couple of times. How will this ten lot subdivision impact uh, Deer Springs? It's hard to, to get a really good number on some of this and, and as you recall, this is gone now. There's a huge dam or, or road that got filled in here. So these lines here have changed. This, this nice gully is, is not there anymore. This is a home site, so it drops off uh, very steeply right behind there. But I think these are a little closer to what uh, is, is there existing now. Maybe it's been carved back a little bit. I, I don't know exactly. But you can see sixty-two ninety and those, those numbers maybe working down to sixty-two eighty over here and kind of follow some of these lines through here. So sixty-two ninety and eighty are generally the numbers. And if you kind of come down here, again, you're tracking these all the way through here. But we start maybe lot five at sixty-two twenty. Then you'd see sixty-two thirty kind of coming through here, sixty-two forty coming through lot three, sixty-two fifty. Kind of working its way up through lot two. So I think at a minimum, you're thirty feet at our upper lot. Slot one is probably thirty feet below theirs, all the way down to, you know, sixty, ninety feet tops on the other end. So as far as view corridors or, or any obstruction of the lake, I, I think it's generally a non-issue from, from how far this, this, this comes down from where those homesites sit now. And certainly it'd be good if you guys are up for walking again. We can get the snow boots out and uh, Chris Bear showed up or Council, Councilwoman Bear showed up on her bike last time, which I, I was, I thought was so fun. But uh, yeah, so if, if there, if, if you guys are up for it or we want to kind of, from the top view, we can kind of see how that rolls down there. So.
Um, is the um, is that little stub to the right just for a turnaround?
Fire.
Yeah, that's, that's a hammerhead turnaround down there.
Yes.
And I know that, that, that would be something that we would want to coordinate with. Um, that would need to be coordinated with the town. That's a little bit harder in terms of snow removal for the town. Cul-de-sacs tend to be a little bit more desirable. We'd have to look at space and other, other issues and impacts to the, the, the vegetation down there, but that's something that would have to be looked at if, if this were to be explored further.
What kind of square footage are you expecting these homes to be?
You know, we haven't gone there completely yet. I would just say you, there's definitely a precedent that's been set. The only, the only item I'd like to say there is I think generally uh, they're a great product. I have nothing to bad to say, but I, I would plan on a more quality product down below. I think there's a special or a better opportunity down there. I'm just, I don't think we need big homes. I just think medium-sized homes that fit up there that would be consistent with the, the community as a whole. But again, I think a better quality.
Um, and uh, so you're not gonna um, strip the land of all its vegetation? You're gonna just have a building envelope? And inside that building envelope is the only area that would get um, stripped of vegetation? Is that the idea?
That's the idea. I think we dedicate all this hillside over here, which is quite steep, not buildable anyway, but again, you never know what people. So we just get dedicated out everything that's not, that doesn't need to be built on. So we could, we could get these buildable lots identified and just call those the buildable envelopes and dedicate everything else.
Yeah. Kind of like over, over by the um, over by the golf course, the lots that are over there, they um, they don't like get rid of all the vegetation and then build. They keep the vegetation and then you know, cordon off a small, the area that's going to get built.
Yeah, generally, I think, I'm thinking the same thing. There always is an element of excavation, but
Right.
preserve everything you can and only in that footprint. And, and I think controlling the buildable footprints is the key there and saying, almost a non-disturbance area beyond that.
Right. Yes, yes, yes. Definitely non-disturbance area.
Chris, I think, what is this? Chris, what, I'm sorry, Jonathan, I was trying to follow up on one thing. Chris, this is, what are you zoned right now in Wasatch County? Open space?
Um, is it JBO's? I think it's a zone. It's, it, mountain was your zone, right? What did all the, it was what what Nate, what Austin property was right above us previously.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a little deep. It looks like it may be zoned open space or a combination of open space mountain. It's hard to read on the map, actually.
It was mountain, just because I know that that's what Nate was up there and we were in that same zone as him.
Do we have the sewer capacity? I'd like to hear from the town, um, engineering. Do we have the sewer capacity to support all of this?
Tim is on.
On man.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to take a look at it and run it through our sewer models, but uh, we should be able to uh, have enough appropriately, uh, especially with the new lift stations and everything coming online uh, by the time this project's built um, to be able to adequately serve this.
And do you have all the water now?
Sorry, say that again, mate.
Uh, I'm just wondering if the developer, the proponent here has all of the water already?
Do we? Yeah, through context, we do have the water we need for these.
I'm sorry, through, through what?
So through our partnerships, we do have the water that we need here.
Thank you.
Just one little side note, my partner Bart, while he was living out of state for a time, uh, they came through here and uh, I, I guess it was JSD, but anyway, without permission, I don't know, maybe Tim, you even know this. I don't know. Without uh, notifying anyone, they came and put their, their, their sewer line through. I think it's a high-pressure sewer, is it, is it, or gas line? Is it the gas line? Something came through here that they were never aware of that got placed right here. So I don't know if that is sewer or gas, but um, it would no one was made aware of it, so.
Yeah, and, and yeah, we, I know, we need to probably talk about that, but um, it's in that, it's in a dedicated easement. And so uh, that's the, that's the thing. And just kind of, you know, I, I was texting Thomas back and forth a little bit on this and there's some, there's some concerns that I have. Um, just kind of like I say, preliminary, looking at uh, uh, some of the, you know, four, five, six lots, uh, you know, as it deals with the, the hammerhead and the turnaround and some of the other issues. But again, it's just, you know, we're, we're going to be able to work through that closely with you and, and provide something that's going to be really a, a nice subdivision, I think, for uh, whoever buys these ten lots and it'd be a nice addition to the town. So I'm excited. I, I will be able to serve you appropriately and uh, and uh, get you moving forward.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate that.
Um, go ahead. Is um, they're like um, what? You're, you're looking at right across the street at another house. Can it be, can you um, offset those a little bit to maybe give a little variety? It's a little cookie cutter-ish?
I like that idea. We've actually thought about maybe even protecting views for these homeowners by staggering these lots just a little bit up and down this street some too, so they can, sorry, jumps around so quickly. Uh, maybe lifting this side up a little bit, this one and pulling this one down a little bit. So we'll work on that. I'll work on placement a little bit. Uh, usually at a point that we know we can kind of move forward. I'll get an architect and a land planner involved and we can start to consider that a little more. So maybe my next iteration could include more thoughtful uh, placement.
You might have to um, reduce it to nine or eight, but that wouldn't bother me.
We can, and we can kind of coordinate with Chris. One of the things that I think would, that we definitely, if uh, if you all decide to move forward with this and ask Chris to kind of redo a redesign is we'd have to have a, a slope analysis, because anything over thirty percent would have to meet the new sensitive lands ordinance. And so that may start to dictate where certain houses are situated, et cetera, or where they can't be situated.
Yeah. Personally, I wouldn't mind seeing like, like six homes. And, and can I, can I see the larger map on uh, where it comes in to please? No, not that one. The one, there you go. How far or how many feet can you tell me from where the back of the, from Bellevue is to the beginning of the first lot? Like, like what's the distance? Is that, it's hard for me to visualize that. There's no, there's no feet or yards on that.
Let me see if this, this, this one has a vision or uh, scale there. So that's a hundred and twenty. And I'm going to guess these lots are eighty or a hundred feet deep there too. So you're probably looking at, you know, two hundred feet from here to there.
Two hundred feet. Okay, so there is a differentiation. Um, and right now it's all brush, correct? In between there, like, like thick sagebrushes and, and if I'm, I'm trying to remember when I walked through.
It's pretty thick sagebrush and gamble oak. It's pretty thick through there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a nice spot, nice stretch.
And that road, would that be a downhill then?
Will it be go downhill?
Downhill, right. And then I'm like, what's the slope of that? I'm just or would it be following the slope of the hill? It's kind of hard for me.
So the goal was to, to hug these contours the best we can. Again, this lot, this has changed a little bit since they put in their roads and flattened these lots out and stuff. But we, we're, if you can see, we're, I'm going to zoom in just a little bit. We're trying to follow these contours the best we can as we move down. This, you can tell that they start to kind of round up at a point too. So for a good amount, we're kind of hugging it as we head down, but you know, you're, you're climbing downward. And as we do think about density, I just kind of want to say upfront, I don't want to keep, I don't want to keep asking more later. There is a two point two units per acre, our neighbors. So we, we are only asking for half of what our neighbors have brought, you know, in on this area. So I, I don't want to start with, certainly I understand slope and protecting wetlands and everything else, but I don't want to start whittling away on a ten-unit subdivision next to a two hundred and twenty lot subdivision that's double the density next door to us that kind of hovers over us and has really changed the nature and experience of the whole lot down there. I'm just trying to be fair and upfront to this property coming in.
Are you worried at all about um, the uh, being only, uh, what, what is that? A hundred feet or a hundred yards um, to the back of lot three there? Um, I, I don't know. I, would you, would you consider even like maybe moving it slightly to the left only because I would I don't, I wouldn't buy a house um, the right side because I'd be worried about um, getting flooded.
You know, the goodness is typically will just depend on those soil studies and that give, gives you a good idea of what your soils are like and what takes place over there. I, I see these as the premium and that would be my dream to, to sit there and watch all the wildlife come through there. And uh, I see this as, you know, to me, better than ski and ski out. That's, that's the good part right there is, is access to the purest nature there. So uh, certainly, yeah, whatever the, the buffering and everything that needs to take place or, or being aware of soil conditions, always that's a must. But uh, yeah, I think these are the, are great lots right here. As good as the lake view directly south.
Of course, I would have to see some other, I, I just have a problem with the access road crossing the hiking and bike trail. I know you've said there are also some other options, but I would like definitely have to see them. Um, but there's no way I would want to see that road course that what we have now is the hiking and biking trail.
Certainly understand that. Uh, yeah, I, let's work together on that and try and come up with those alternatives, what, what would be acceptable. Certainly we need access down here, uh, regardless. So what is the best way to do that? And I'm, I'm more than happy to work through and explore and propose options.
And I also think, I mean, the area is somewhat sensitive, so I think you're going to have to seriously consider doing something in regard to the density, just because of the sensitivity of the area alone, irregardless of what's above you.
Can, can you help me understand the, the uh, when you say the sensitivities? That's kind of a zoomed in density and impacting the sensitivity.
All the wetlands.
Sure. So when we hired this firm out of Logan, there's two or three in the state that are probably the best at what they do on this. And they came down and they, we just said, hey, we've got this wetlands area here. Help us mitigate, help us approach this the right way. Uh, you know, he conducted a study. I have that whole report. Um, but density doesn't impact wetland. We just have to preserve and protect wetland, but there's no negative impact to.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because depending on what the people who are in those lots are doing can impact the wetlands.
And I think, Chris, some of that might be dependent on the, the slope analysis too. I think that will help, right? Because you will be, this, this development will be a break in what is otherwise open space on all sides, right? It, it will, it will have some impacts. I don't know if it has impact on wildlife corridor movement or not, but it certainly is going to have some impact based on the slope, the wetlands, because everything around this is open space.
Would you consider sharing that wetlands report with us just so that we could kind of get some insight?
Yeah, you bet. Some reason it's not letting me share this. Uh, yeah, so what was probably a, a path got filled in. So this is probably a sixty-foot road that got filled in through here. There, there was a, a draw that started way up top and came all the way down. But that got filled in and compacted and, and now a lot sits there about sixty feet above probably what, what was potentially what we're discussing. So you're right, this, this area has been heavily impacted by, you know, really, we took the northern swath of hideout and we put two hundred and twenty homes in it, you know, and, and Bart Warner, you know, it, it changed the nature uh, of the whole experience there. So yeah, there has been the impact and I, you know, uh, again, we, we, I'll share that study with you and I, I think we can work around those. And I think they've identified those mitigating factors by distance and to protect those areas. And, and we're certainly happy to do that. Um, so yeah, we're, we're very happy to, to do all that it takes to preserve and protect the wetlands. Certainly following that study, it will, will help guide us through that. I guess our hope too is just that bringing that amenity to the community is going to be such a great part. You know, currently that wouldn't be accessible and we'd love to make that part of it. Uh, I think all of Deer Springs will benefits from it. I know they've got a great trail system. I think this would be wonderful to include this in the trail experience. That would be a highlight on that, on that run.
Do any other commissioners have any other questions for Chris?
I, I have one quick question. Um, this little triangle down here to the right, is that, it, isn't there a little piece of potential commercial?
This is not associated with us.
No, I know, I know. I'm, I guess I'm asking Thomas.
Yeah, if you go, I can't annotate on here, but if you go to, Chris, is that, is that your arrow there?
Yeah.
To the right and down just a little bit, right in that area. Right over there, we, the town has a commercial, which is on that main road.
Oh, okay.
Ross Creek Road, yeah. Yep. Exactly.
So the commercial comes in this area. So their road, is it, uh, does it come in right there and then turn? Is that, is it lined up with that one?
It's not lined up right now. It's actually to the south of there.
Oh, sorry, jumping around to the south a little bit. Okay.
Yeah, so it's down there a little bit further is where, let me just make sure I'm saying that right. Yeah, is where the, um,
And then the commercial sits south of that access point or north?
It's right kind of along, it's kind of right along Ross Creek Road, that main road. And up toward, uh, two forty-eight on either side of Ross Creek when it comes into the, uh, off of two forty-eight. Again, with just a little bit south of, real close to where your cursor is actually.
Down here, yeah. Yeah, that's, well, that's good to know. So we'll have commercial there.
It's not zone commercial yet, but it's being considered for commercial based on community planning, surets, et cetera. Yeah.
And I think looking at this larger picture, I think that path comes right through, it rips back this way. I know it does a jog. It's a pretty fun line. And, and that's, I guess, where we're thinking, wherever that, I think it kind of hugs right through there now. And certainly that could stay, but I think as that road, that bike trail curves through there, bringing it right through there would be fun. Did we end up getting connected to the state? Can we access the lake now through there?
To the perimeter trail?
Yeah, can we carry on south into the state lands on a trail?
That is, that is, that is the goal. We're working with the state right now. We have only just a few limited access points where we can go from town property to the state federal, the state park property there. So those trails aren't yet in, but we have the landing pads, uh, town owned, town dedicated land in a few locations in Lakeview and in, uh, Deer Springs as well, where we can start to make those access points.
Great. That, that would be fantastic. I mean, what a great amenity though, to have access from all the residents to come through there and head down to the lake. That, that's, that's incredible.
And we did the same down in shoreline too. We got a couple of access points down there. Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Well, as you guys know, I've been in Hydeup for a long time. We love it up there. Uh, we love everything about the views, everything that's going on over there. We've enjoyed all the experiences working with you guys. So thank you. Uh, we would love to pursue this and, and take this through, you know, we kind of, not to say, they asked me to I withdrew because they wanted to do site visits and do everything. And then a little bit of it was, hey, we're working through our annex process a little bit. So I've kind of held, but we're we're definitely at that point that we would like to become part of the community over there and not an island. And, uh, I, but I'd love to work creatively with everyone to, to meet these things and, and to get the, the right things done there.
So if, um, if planning commission, if you, if you all don't have any questions, it sounds like you want, um, potentially us to continue working with him, look at a slope analysis so that we can understand sensitive lands. That will dictate a significant amount. Sensitive lands were not a part of the ordinance when Deer Springs or Lakeview or Shoreline came in. And so we have a different set of ordinance requirements. So that'll be an important component of this. Um, look at density and, um,
The access road.
Limits of disturbance, access road and protection of the trail. So well, I can, if I missed anything, let me know.
So then you'll go, Chris, you'll go forward, uh, with working with, uh, Thomas and doing what's been asked and then come back with some other, uh,
Updates and
See, yeah, some other updates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys. Appreciate the time.
Have a good night.
Happy holidays.
Last thing on the agenda.
Thanks, guys.
Is the consideration and establishment of the twenty twenty-three planning commission regular meeting schedule. I believe everyone's got a copy of the proposed meetings schedule. Does anybody have any issues with that as it stands? Okay, if not, then we'd like, somebody like to make a motion to accept that as the twenty twenty-three planning commission schedule.
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, and then we'll take a vote. Glennis?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And Tony's a yes. That concludes this month's meeting. Thank you all for being here and I hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday season. And we'll see everybody in January.
Um, Tony, you need to, uh, motion to adjourn, please.
Ah, sorry about that. Okay. Would somebody like to make the motion to adjourn the meeting?
I mute move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Glennis?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tony's a yes. Okay. Thank you all and we'll see you all January twenty-third, I believe it is.
Right. Thank you. Bye-bye.